Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board and I am calling this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, April 1st, 2019. Let me first check, does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. Approval of minutes, we have minutes that were circulated for March 18th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes that circulated?
Yeah. We're wondering if we were here, I wasn't here. Who was here?
Uh, Tim Skoggins, Ken Harrington, Joe Barber. So we gotta wait until we've got those three guys here. Okay, first I have check warrant number 29 in the amount of $4,050.
Some move.
Motion approved from Art.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. This looks to be stipends.
Yeah, that's the stipend.
For town officers. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 29 in the amount of $4,050 is approved 4-0-0.
Will we vote for all the payrolls?
Next, I have payroll warrant number 19 in the amount of $24,622.2.
Some move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So payroll warrant number 19 in the amount of $24,622.2 is approved 4-0-0. Next, I have a retirement warrant number 3 in the amount of $11,251.10.
Some move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the retirement warrant? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, retirement warrant number 3 in the amount of $11,251.10 is approved 4-0-0. And lastly, I have check warrant number 30 in the amount of $53,197.62.
Some move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Items over $1,000 on this one. $3,002 Appalachian Marine.
Sorry, it's New Salt Fire.
Oh, okay. $8,800 to Eddie Schule Construction for this one here. $1,500 to G.A. Bowe Fuels. $1,500 to G.A. Bowe. $1,200 to G.A. Bowe. $3,500 to K.A.S. It's gotta be water testing somewhere.
Water, yes.
$2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for cemetery maintenance. $16,000 to U.S. Bank.
It's the May bond payment for the garage.
$16,000?
Yeah. It's two payments a year. The first one is interest plus principal, which is a higher one, this one is an interest.
Oh, okay. $1,500 to West Mountain Traffic Control.
That's just them working with the road crew. I think that was on White Creek.
White Creek. $3,300 to wholesale distributors.
There's variety of parts, different tractors in front.
And $1,600 to Williamy Daily.
This is gravel.
Yep.
The $3,500 to K.A.S., I have to take that back. That was to prepare the new application and go through the application process or re-certifying the landfill.
Right, right, okay, yeah, I remember that paperwork coming through. Okay, any more discussion on check warrant number 30? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So check warrant number 30 in the amount of $53,197.62 is approved 4-0-0. Okay, are there any announcements? I've got a couple. First, I want to mention we received a letter from the town clerk pointing out open positions in the office of the listers and also town agent. Town agent is one that we have not tried to fill. It's kind of a relic. It has to do with helping prosecutors prosecute criminal cases, not really relevant to us. We do have opening for Lister, which has not been filled, and no one has yet raised their hand for that. I would suggest that anyone out there who's interested in serving as Lister to let David Kiernan know, and we will take your application into consideration. Also, I will point out that we have openings on the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board. So, anyone wishing to serve the town in those capacities, let us know, and we will see to it that you very likely get to serve. I want to mention again that we are doing an internet coverage survey in Shasbury. We're trying to find out who does not have internet still, in particular, and also stuff about the quality of the internet that people do have. So you can go to the Shasbury website, shasbryvt.gov, and fill out the survey there. If you're not able to get to the internet, you can call a phone number, which spelled out is 7 Shaftspoo7. I don't remember the numbers, but if you call 7 Shaftspoo7 and leave a message with your contact information, I'll call you back and take your survey information down and get it into the system.
Isn't there a paper questionnaire downstairs?
Yes, thank you. And you can stop by Cole Hall and in front of the clerk's office, the paper questionnaire's there, and you can fill it out that way. We're probably gonna keep it open maybe a couple more weeks. I'm thinking around mid-April, we'll shut it down and start processing the results and see what we can do. Item number six, public comments. Okay.
What's it for? Comments?
Anything.
Tim Chris, yes. Tell us your public comment.
Do you mind just stepping up a little closer to the mics, please?
I just want to know what you guys plan on doing about the roads. Last weekend, my wife got called to work. Roads never got plowed till after 8 o'clock up on my hill. But your town roads, everything down low where you had this about four inches of snow, we had 16 up on the mountain. Never got plowed till after 8 o'clock, she couldn't even go to work. Then the week before, if we had an emergency up on that mountain, the weekend before that, you couldn't have got an ambulance, you couldn't have got a fire truck up there, up that road. Everybody was parking at the bottom because they couldn't get through it. I've been up there over almost 30 years, and all we get told is that, oh, you shouldn't live up there. Well, we all pay taxes, and that road never gets taken care of well. I want to know what this town's gonna do about it. And if you're gonna stop buying garbage gravel, because you don't even put DOT spec gravel down on these roads. You've been buying it for years and years, and I'm not blaming this board for it, okay? It's happened before you guys were on the board. And now, these roads have been getting worse every year. So I'm just wondering what the plans are about these roads. Because you've come to a crisis situation where you can't drive on them. I mean, you can go up to Arlington, their roads are dirt roads too. You go up and drive on Arlington's dirt roads right now, they're nothing like Shasbury's. I mean, you don't grade them properly. I've been here before and talked about, you need to get instructions for these grader operators. You don't, you know, they grade them, first rainstorm, your potholes are all back in the road because they don't cut them out. You don't put enough, you don't put the crown in the roads, it rains, the water's running straight down the middle of the roads. It doesn't never get in the ditches. So, I'm just, I mean, everybody's been wasting our money, and I want to know what's gonna happen, and I want our road fixed this year.
I'm not familiar where you live, would you please explain?
Blueberry Hill.
Blueberry Hill, okay.
And I just want, like to know what you plan on doing about it.
Well, let me off, first off, yeah, the roads were terrible two weeks ago. My road, Rollin Road, normally fares pretty well through mud season. It was pretty much impassable. I was out there pushing people out of the mud. It was so soupy, I was sinking just standing there in my shoes. It was an extraordinary case where the repeated thaws, freezes and thaws through the winter, which we seem to get four or five mud seasons through the winter now. And then, that was, you know, from three inches of snow and frozen ground to 70 degrees in like four days, and it just, it wreaked havoc. And I agree, they shouldn't be that way.
I mean, you're wasting money, you know, with all this money you're spending on stone to throw on them. I mean, that's, yeah, that's a quick solution, but it's not the fix.
You're right, you're right.
For these roads, and it's gone too long on these roads. And I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm up at 4 o'clock heading out, my house, to go to work. And I know other ones on my hill too are heading out. And when all of us got four-wheel-drive trucks and we can't get out, and I know Trevor Mance has called many times to the foreman to get up there to get us out so we can all get to work. When they're all down here plowing these little streets, and then the trucks struggle to make our hill because it's been snowing so long that it's too deep for them to even try to get up there. They struggled getting up that road the other day because it's so deep and so hard to push it uphill. I mean, they need to hit the hills and then work their way back down because the hills is where they get more of it. I mean, you start up Blueberry Hill, you cross the snow line. It could be raining, and you cross the snow line when you start up that hill. And it's totally different.
Well, let me ask you, the board's been talking for a couple of years now about seriously increasing the amount of money that we spend on roads in order to start rebuilding them on a schedule. We haven't done that in the past, we've reacted to road conditions, but roads periodically have to be rebuilt, whether it's 25, 50, or 100 years, pick a number, but they don't last forever. And one of the numbers that we've thrown around is trying to rebuild a mile of road a year, which with 50 miles of gravel road...
90 years.
It would still take us 50 years, but even that is, we're looking at a 2.5 cent tax increase to pull that off. Is that something that you would support?
I've been, my taxes have gone up, have more than doubled up there, so, I mean...
Well, not under this administration.
No, I'm not saying...
We've barely raised the taxes in four years.
More than doubled. And where they have my house assessed, there's nowhere's even in the ball range because they can't even sell them up there for that.
Well, yeah, nobody, we all agree with you that the roads need to be better.
I think it's worth mentioning that we have a road foreman that has an engineering degree now. We've never had that before.
Good point, yeah. We were...
Well, we're gonna hold everybody responsible. So are you guys gonna hold them responsible when I, next rainstorm, after they finally get graded and all the potholes come back? Who's holding everybody accountable?
We've got a new program, Tim, that we're gonna have one grader, pretty much grading all the time as possible this year.
But they still need to start cutting them down. I haven't seen, and I have not seen them cut the potholes out of these roads since I've lived here.
Well, we've had it, I understand that too, Tim. I used to work on these roads, and the material I'll get you, previous times was put out there and it was not the proper material.
It's not DOT spec, Ken, and you know that.
It is now, it is now. And we had, the thing was that this last mud storm, it was on a weekend, we couldn't get any supplies because they really didn't have it.
I understand, but who's responsible if, say there was a fire up there, who's responsible? And they couldn't get up there and your place burns down. I mean, technically, you guys being responsible.
I know, and it's hard, it's hard, I'm not there exactly.
I'm not being critical, but I'm just, I'm thinking about it, you know, like, there's elderly people that live up there?
We've got a program...
You couldn't have got them up there, and there would have been nothing you could have done to get through it.
We've got a program with fabric and the proper material, and we're doing certain sections of the road every year. And we try to keep track of the areas that have gone bad, and we will work on those first. And the areas that we have fixed, and fixed right, didn't come back.
Oh, I wouldn't disagree with you that they wouldn't, but...
Well, I haven't seen any areas like that on Myers where I live.
Well, I'm on Blueberry Hill, and I'm, so I'm...
It's a work in progress, you can't do it all at once. And I'm not in favor, I want what you came with the roads, but I'm not, I don't want to raise the taxes so you can't live in the town. You've got a balance.
They're already close to that.
I understand that, but that's not town tax. Most of that's school taxes. My taxes have gone up too. When I owned my house, my taxes was $350 a year. Now they're $2,000.
Well, mine was $1,100 when I moved in here, and they're almost $6,000 now, so that's a little out of the spew.
I know.
Because at that price, I can build a house for $100 a square foot, there's no way my house is worth more than that.
I understand, I agree with you.
Yeah, we've been living with the problem for years and years and years and years. It doesn't get better, and, you know, it makes our houses less livable, it decreases our house valuation, and it's especially poor optics now. We've got a nice shiny, brand-new garage that we can afford, but we can't keep our roads in shape. It's bad optics.
Well, we agree with you, the roads are not good enough. We can't fix them overnight. We're looking at decades of neglect essentially is what's brought us to this point, and we've got a plan to deal with it, but it's gonna take time.
Ditching is one of the most important things. Ditching and pushing back the brush so that sunlight gets down and dries it, that sort of stuff.
I agree with you.
And so, that's exactly what our...
Because they need to clean them, and half the time they don't clean them. And then when they grade, they leave a berm there so the water can't even get into the ditches around here. That's why I'm asking, have they trained any, have they trained a grader operator so he knows to cut them all the way down and to put that wing out over the ditch line and bring it back in? Because that's my question. I mean, I was down here three or four years ago, and you guys, oh, yeah, we'll get them, we should get them trained. Well, I don't, I mean, has it happened? I mean, you got all this brand-new equipment...
There's a better crown on the road than there ever was before. Don't you think, Kenny?
What's that?
There's a better crown on the road than there's ever been before.
They've got better training for the operators, and they've got it now for them. The rule is supposed to be that every man on the crew can run every piece of equipment.
Yeah, I don't care whether they're ready to run it or not. Running it and operating it's two different things. Do they know what they need to do when they put that blade down on that road to cut all those potholes down to the bottom?
Haven't we had somebody out there from the state sort of...
We have, and one of the main things, if I can, that we have a new direction. Part of this is changing the pathway the road partners have been operating in for a long, long time, and changing kind of the culture and the view of how to get things done. And one of the main things to address your issues is to actually have a grader plan and to have the grader going around. We have a good operator, he has been state-trained, but you know, grading always rush out in mud season, two graders go around, and then it all comes to a halt for a while. And now we're working on a plan that basically the graders and the roads will be running all year, other than the wintertime. We're getting an attachment so we can compact the road as we're grading it to keep that crown in place. Because I can imagine on Blueberry Hill, the way it's been graded, as soon as it gets up, it's nice and soft, and the water comes right down the middle because it's a card ride.
But it's all the roads.
Oh, it's all the roads, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It runs down the middle, and when it sits in the middle of the road, all that is, is soaking in, down in the middle of your road more instead of getting it off into the ditches so it gets away from that road and away from that gravel to get it away.
We're looking for, you know, different technologies we want to put in that really aren't old, they've been used in lots of places, and to compact the road as it's being graded. After we establish crown, there's a lot of not great material on a lot of our roads, and a lot of even worse base. And, you know, the, on West Mountain on your corner, on Blueberry Hill, that was quite an eruption two weeks ago, and there were parts of that road where I talked to people on West Mountain who had never seen water come up through the roads like that. I mean, where I live and going through Arlington and Summerlin, there were roads that had been blocked off for the first time in 10 years that were just like that. So, there were a lot of problems. This was an especially bad period, but there's ditching, it's trees, it's the whole nine yards.
I know, and also, I mean, I know the top of Bennett Hill has never gone bad, and that went bad this year because the guy built a new garage there on the corner, and he dumped that eight-foot of soil along the edge of your road.
Yeah, it has the berm up there.
And it collapsed, it collapsed the water table. I mean, that's, people don't realize, I mean, that's a compaction method.
The berm down on the right side as you're going down there.
Yeah, and your road is, all went to pieces right there, first time since I've, Bennett Hill never goes. And because they piled that eight feet of dirt wing road off to the side of you, I mean, that caused you a road problem right there. I mean, people don't realize what it does.
But the ditching is essential.
The ditching is, you know, I don't think anyone's gonna deny it.
Myers Road, my house, I've been there 11 years now, it's more than 10 feet wider than it was when I moved in.
And the ditching is behind, the trees are behind, I mean, the ditches should be, a lot of our ditches should be stone-lined because of the slope they have. There's just a lot of things that we're moving on, and it's catching up with, you know, years where it just wasn't getting done. It's just a plan, which is why with our new foreman who has the institutional experience from B-Trans, because we hired him as a supervisor at a B-Trans to put in place programs, because without a plan, we're not gonna get anywhere. We're finally getting to the point where we have plans and goals to hit, and then we can start addressing these issues. Getting some of the roads, you know, we can't deny that there's problems on a lot of these areas.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, laying out needs a little drainage underneath and stone and pipe and get it out of there and some fabric.
West Mountain, we're putting in a few like this summer, and then going down the other way. I mean, we have a whole bunch of projects going on this summer, but it takes a little time. And with 50 miles of gravel, it does take time, but we're behind. We should be moving at a faster pace, which is what we're looking to do now with outside contractors, and have our guys do maintenance and hire companies to do these projects to move things along quicker.
Yeah, four months ago, I spoke with Mike Yonati, and he seems like a solid guy. He seems like he knows what he's doing. He came out to my place and he looked around, and he told me what was needed. He said, you know, we need to ditch, we need a culvert under the road in the south.
On the bend, right by your house, yeah.
To drain it, and we need to do this. I want to make sure that that doesn't get, that gets on the list somewhere.
You're on the list, because we did the RAS with the grant from the state, the asphalt shingle on the downslope past, I don't know, the side road now, but we did that section...
That's Eric.
Yeah, yes, thank you, because we got a grant to do that and had a set of certain specifications, but, yeah, the other part needs to be done, needs ditches, it needs a whole bunch of things. Needs new base on that road is what it needs too. A lot of the base on these roads, you know, were tree stumps.
Yeah, the guys came up and graded two weeks ago today, and the following Wednesday, 48 hours later, interior which we had not had a drop of rain, where they had graded, it was all puddles, just water bubbling up through the road.
Yeah, you have an especially wet area up there too, which has lots of challenges. Even where it comes across, in one part of the road, it pools right on the other side of the road. Because you have to get permission to dig deeper in to push it to the next swamp that's back there.
Yeah, that's about a tenth of the mile...
Yeah, just west of my place.
But there's another culvert needed right in front of my place.
And we were up there with the state engineers trying to work up a plan for that area too. Because that's the other thing we're trying to bring in is, you know, we have access to the state engineers, come in and design us a real fix, not, let's go get another truck of gravel and throw it on, because that is just wasting money. Gravel just sinks in and disappears.
Yeah, but they've also bought bad gravel for the last 30 years.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, we're gonna move on to MHG Solar proposal. Hi.
Hi.
And you are?
I'm Pete Geezy with MHG Solar. This is a good spot for me, or should I?
Is it good for the volume?
Would you mind going up just a little bit closer, please?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, folks behind you can't hear me, just let me there. So, Pete Geezy with MHG Solar, we are doing solar project development around the country, but really focused right now in southwestern Vermont. And the way we're going about it is unique. My partner, Thomas, is from Dorset, Manchester area, and we actually own just on 7A, just north of here, the project on self-storage building, the rooftop there, if you've seen it. That's one of our projects, and we've got about two megawatts of projects operational sort of in the Manchester south area. At the end of last year, we turned on a 500-kilowatt ground matter project, so that's what we'd be proposing generally to sell power to the town from a project like this. Roughly three and a half acres in an old gravel pit off to the west side of Manchester. And what Thomas and I really do is, we try to build our solar projects in a way that integrates with the community, so that really, from our standpoint, starts from siting. So, either rooftops, places that are already built out, or when we do go to the ground to build larger projects, more cost-effective projects, we are sitting all of our projects in industrial zones. We have an old remainder parcel down in Bennington that's in an industrial park that really can't be built on with a slab building, but we can put a solar project there because we can handle the grades, stay back from top of bank. And then the bulk of our portfolio is actually in slate quarries running from Paulette up to Fairhaven, and so we're working with mineral extraction operators, and we're actually setting our projects within the quarries, off to the side of the operational quarries, preserving agricultural land, preserving forested land, trying to put our projects where towns support them, where people fundamentally can't see them. We obviously like solar, we think it's a value add to the communities, but we know that the way things have developed in Vermont and across the country, there's always contentiousness about, is it visible, is it a change in somebody's experience of their town? So our projects, you basically can't see, and any glimpse you do get of them is completely within an industrial zone, is within a preferred area of the town. So that's been our approach. We have a string of projects, like I said, that run from basically Fairhaven south, and we have sort of one little outlier down in Bennington, which is actually probably closer and more relevant to you guys, but they're all the same thesis. And so they're 500 KW ground matter projects, three to four acres. We develop them, own them, operate them. There's no capital cost to anybody who buys the power from us. But in Vermont, just as a quick primer, some of you may be aware of this, some of you may not, there's a group net metering program, and what that allows individuals, businesses, towns, schools to do is buy credits that are produced from these solar systems. So we actually send all of our power into the grid, and imagine each project basically has a bank account with Green Mountain Power. Every kilowatt we send in gets a value ascribed to it and builds up a credit pile of dollars, and then we can allocate that to customers. And so we do, we really like to sort of round out the community anchoring if we can, we like to go to schools... So we actually send all of our power into the grid and imagine each project basically has a bank account with Green Mountain Power. Every kilowatt we send in gets a value ascribed to it and builds up a credit pile of dollars. And then we can allocate that to customers. And so we do, we really like to sort of round out the, the community anchoring if we can. We like to go to schools, school districts, townships, entities that are, are gonna be long, stable. Helps us from a financing standpoint to know we have a counterparty that's gonna be there for a while. I mean, towns have been here for two, 300 years. That helps us understand that we're gonna have an off-taker for our project. But we also like the fact that the benefits push down to, to the people, right? And go through the students, go through this, go through the teachers, go through the township, creates tax savings. It's, it's an efficient way for us to get the savings down to the people as opposed to going door to door and trying to subscribe a bunch of individuals who are bearing ages, will be moving in and out of the project. So our approach to making it a community base is really to go to those types of entities. Uh, and so we've chatted with Dave about it a little bit and wanted to come and talk to the board about the potential for you all to participate in one of our projects. And the way that we've structured our, our offering to, to towns and really all of our customers to try and take the risk out of it. We're in the solar business. We understand what's happening with the power prices. We understand the cost of our infrastructure to put it in. We take all of that risk on ourselves. So we own it, operate it, insure it. There's no capital cost to you. And then the way that you make your benefit is, say we send you a thousand dollars worth of credits. Your Green Mountain Power bill will go down by in the case of say a thousand dollars. You then get a bill from us for less than that thousand dollar credit. So we give a seven and a half percent discount. No matter what the value that credit does, we'll always give you a seven and a half percent savings off of that. So in that thousand dollar example, you would give a thousand dollars of credit from the utility. Your bill goes down. We would then send you a bill for 925 dollars. So you would save 75 dollars. In the case of the town where you use about 18,000 dollars with power a year, we typically try to target about 90% to give you guys some room for annual fluctuations, building moves, some efficiencies a year where you use more or less. We wanna make sure that you have a little bit of guard band there. So we did, looked at the accounts, you roughly 16,000 dollars worth of credits that we could deliver to you over the course of a given year. So in our structure, that would equate to about 1,200 dollars a year in the, in the early years in savings. And over the 25 years of the arrangement, you'd save 35 to 40,000 dollars in power cost without any capital expense. Um, and if we, for any given month, let's say we don't deliver credits to you, your bill, your GMP bill doesn't show any. Let's say it's January, it snowed for 30 days straight, we don't produce any power. Your experience would be the same as if we were never there. So your Green Mountain Power bill would remain unchanged, you'd pay them. And we would never, we wouldn't send you a bill because we wouldn't have supplied you with the credit. So that's our general thesis on sort of who we are, how we're approaching development here, um, where we're setting our projects. And then the value that we think we can provide to, like I said, we try to do this with schools, towns, local businesses where we can. Um, they can be a little tougher to piece in just because of track record. We have to find long-lived businesses that have, you know, a pretty strong foundation here. But that's, that's what we've gotten. I'm certainly happy to answer questions from, I mean, the board members or frankly, folks behind me.
So what, what do you want from us?
Three acres of land.
Well, no. So we actually have projects. So we, we have projects that have available capacity. And what we're offering is the opportunity to subscribe to one of those projects. Well, we're gonna start building them now that it's spring. Uh, we're moving ahead with our first two projects in the next few weeks. Uh, Green Mountain Power pulling out power lines and us, you know, doing our site grading and prep. Those projects will be operational by the end of the summer. And then we have another seven rolling behind that. So we're gonna, every, we build about two at a time kind of throughout the summer and fall. Um, so as long as you're at Green Mountain Power, you can subscribe to any, subscribe to any one of those projects. So you know, likely candidate for you guys would be our Bennington project, um, although proximity doesn't really matter. Um, and what we would do is sign, sign up an agreement where we would start delivering new credits as soon as one of those projects was operational. And you would start effectively seeing your power bill go down from Green Mountain Power. And then like I said, we would bill you less than that, that credit was worth. So really what we're offering is participation in a system. We're not asking for land. We're not asking for uh any sort of long-term commitment from anything that you own. We're not asking for any capital. Uh, we're really just asking for a partner to take savings from the project.
What's the liability to the town in this?
The li, the liability for the town is that the town is signing up for a 25-year commitment to buy the savings as they're produced from the power. Uh, but there is no capital expenditure. There is no upfront outlet.
And I guess you need people like towns to say they will take the credits.
Yep.
For it, for your business model to work.
Yeah, so all of our, all of our revenue for our projects, so we'll, we'll fund it, build it, operate it. But all of the revenue that the project makes comes from us selling the power. It's a virtual sale. You're getting the credits. But Green Mountain Power doesn't give us any money for this. We, we don't get any monetary benefit. They just allow us to operate on the grid. And so all of the revenue comes from yourselves, other towns, the school district. Most of our projects are two to three subscribers, depending on size. Um, and that's generally speaking how it's made up.
How are you financed?
Uh, so we finance our own development and then the way that solar uh works, there's an investment tax credit. So that's a big driver of the value. So you need entities there really who have, it's at this scale, who need, you know, million dollar tax bills in a year. So you typically have banks, regional banks, um, who will take a portion of the equity piece in structure. And then we use some senior debt and things like that to get the project off the ground, much like the bond you have for your garage. Uh, we'll go to, you know, local development agencies, for example, are a good access to capital in this market for that. And they'll give you 10 or 15 years of basically project-based bond debt on your performance. And we are the, the long-term owner of it. So we take basically that, that last decade is when we start to see our benefit as the owner operator of the project.
25 years is a long time for a commitment.
It is a long time. Yeah, we're, so it's a couple of things that drive that. A, it's an infrastructure project. We're putting out a couple of million dollars per project in steel panels, electrical connections. Uh, we're operating it. We're refurbishing, recycling through inverters, common failure points. Um, so we have a, we have a big commitment in it and a large capital expense and we're covering it pennies per kilowatt hour at a time. So it is, the entire structure is really built to look like a transmission line or a hydro project or something where you're trying to keep the cost of power as low as you can to the customer. And that means that your breakevens are usually out past 10, 12, 15 years, just kind of the way that infrastructure prices out. So from our view, that's what drives, fundamentally drives the length is we need partners who will be with us to make it worth doing, right? If somebody's gonna leave in 10 years, at that point, we've just taken a bunch of risk, given some benefits to somebody for 10 years and gotten nothing out of it.
But your, but your investors make their money back in how many years? Seven years?
Uh, the, the front end of the financial structure is usually like a seven to 10, seven to 11 year payback for the, for the initial investors sort of go out of the deal. And then you're left with basically a decade of returns, hopefully for the person who owns the property. Uh, and then the other thing is the, the equipment is uh warranted for 25 years, the vast majority of it. Our land leases are 35 to 40 years. These are intended to be, put them in place. They're not moving around. We're, we are paying for upgrades to the grid in most of these scenarios, redoing three-phase lines, putting in protections at substations. And so we're, we're in a way hardening up the grid and all of that is, is built on the idea of this is an asset that's going to plug into the grid and add value for years to come, not something that just sort of flips on and off. So it does drive longer range commitments. It's another reason that we, we went to this, we call it an index, but where we would say, whatever the bill credit is in the market, we'll take the risk on it moving up or down a couple of percent each year. That way you don't have to get into the power business and guess, you know, is it gonna keep going up? Is it gonna drop one year? It's relatively safe structure. And in that way, we help to sort of take some of the bite out of the longer commitment as well. Because we're not asking to have a view on what power is gonna cost 20 years from now.
But the state has just upped the allowance of credit back. Have they, Dave? Do you?
I don't think so, not yet.
Not yet. So there's a limit to how much they pay back?
That's an excellent point in the sense that um this industry is very, very dependent upon uh government incentive programs. And the profitability or the breakeven of it is extremely dependent on it. And you know, these programs that are placed certainly do not have 25-year horizons. And so to say that there's no risk, I think is uh.
Yeah.
A bit misleading.
Yeah. 25 years is a long time to commit, particularly with the technology moving as quickly as it does. I mean, next year, your panels could be obsolete.
Yeah, I, it's, it's certainly a fair point. You see, you, across spectrums in technology, we've seen with solar, um, the biggest up changes have happened. What we're seeing with panels now is sort of, they are getting steadily more efficient, but the industry has settled. That's really become a commodity that they're just eking value out of. Where we're really seeing cost savings across the industry is in how efficiently we can put these in. So we're, we're learning how to install them better. The flip side in, in the states like Vermont, unfortunately, the rules have changed. On the other side, the utility's adding a lot more grid protections. We have reclosers. They used to own the transformers. Now we have to own the transformers. While we like our sites, we wouldn't necessarily as solar professionals go and look at slate quarries and say that's the perfect spot for a solar project.
Yeah.
That causes development risk on the front end. It's more, it's a little more expensive to build. So solar, and I think it's probably fair, in, in Vermont, there's been a lot of solar, that you have to make some rules. And I, from a developer standpoint, we would say it's probably become a little bit overly restrictive, but it's in reaction to people throwing panels on farm fields right next to the road and bad reaction. So there, there's a snapback to that. We've decided that we think we can still build quality projects within that construct, even though it's extremely limiting. Um, and you know, we're excited about this project. It is a long commitment. I would, to the, to the gentleman on the comment about the incentives. So the incentives that do flow to us are the, the federal tax credit. That basically is a year one credit and the depreciation. That's 100% first year. And then there's a 10-year solar incentive that comes through the program for Green Mountain Power taking the power. Now they take the renewable energy credits. They give all the benefit of that, helps them meet their goals, the 100% goals. After that 10th year, it's just the, the legal ability to operate on the grid. There's no more, there is no longer an incentive there. Um, but yeah, solar, like so many industries, has benefited from subsidies being in place to help it get off the ground.
I don't, I don't think we can make a decision today.
No, we won't make a decision tonight, but I, I wanna make sure I understand. So essentially, we're agreeing to buy uh the town's electricity from the, from you for 25 years.
Yeah, I would think we would become effectively a second provider. So you would still have Green Mountain Power, your experience with Green Mountain Power, reliability, billing, all of that would still happen. What you'd be buying from us is effectively savings calculated off of your existing provider's bill. You would be committing to do that for 25 years. So we would be a second electricity provider, but we wouldn't change your usage. We wouldn't change any of your experience other than if we delivered credits to your bill, we would then bill you for those credits.
And why do you need us? Is it some legal thing that you can't just sell your power directly to Green Mountain Power?
So there are, there are programs in the state where you can build even larger projects than the ones we're building. And you can competitively build, bid them to Green Mountain Power. Um, those projects in, in, in all states that drives an extremely competitive cost of power and puts risk on those projects that's unique. Um, we have, we have a couple of those that we're moving forward. There's one in Wallingford that we're gonna build. Um, they're three, four times bigger than these projects. They're, they're extremely challenging to site because that, that project, for instance, is an old asphalt mixing site. And there are a lot of 50 acre of those laying around. We happen to have one of them. Um, but it's hard to, it's hard to find 50 acres of developable ground to drive the kind of cost of power that Green Mountain Power would buy at. So this program is really a retail rate offset opportunity. It's, it's for really, like, if you think with a town, perhaps you guys have interest or desire to raise a bond and build your own solar project and be an operator of an energy asset to credit allocate to yourself. But that's fairly risky business and it is a couple of million dollars that you have to go find and then you have to operate it. Most folks aren't doing that and you don't get the investment tax credits. So you'd ultimately need somebody like us to come in and arrange it for you anyhow. So this program sort of takes away all that and says, well, your, your town hall rooftop doesn't really work. Maybe your new garage could host a couple of panels. I don't, I don't have the details on it. But it, it's, it's a way for the market to deliver solar value to entities that can't really do it on their own. They don't have 100,000 square foot roof that's structurally sound. They don't have five acres of their own land adjacent to industrial load. But they still want the benefits of the green power that's being put into the grid. So that's what the program is designed to do.
Okay, I assume you have a, a contract you could send us that we could look over?
Yeah, we have sent, there's a quick deal summary and a, a short form contract we've taken, sort of the market standard 35-page contract. We've narrowed it down to about six. So uh if you guys wanna take a look at it, we've tried to make it pretty much as, as simple as it can be. Um, but yeah, having, ta, take a look at it. We're happy to come back and chat, answer questions. Understand that often this takes several times to talk through. Um, you know, certainly there are fair challenges to it. And it can often also feel a little bit like a unicorn running around in the woods. Like, I'm not trying to purport free savings, but the structure is intended to, to deliver that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any more questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, well, we'll uh take it under advisement.
Great.
We appreciate you coming out.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have planning commission appointments that we need to make. Um, Michael Chianowski and Michael Foley are both, uh, their terms expired and need to get reappointed. They both would like to continue serving and uh they both are previously held three-year terms. So if there is a agreement, can I get a motion to appoint Michael? Well, first, uh, are we agreeable to appoint in them in one motion?
Yeah, do you want them both in one motion?
I would like them both in one motion.
Okay, all right, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Art to appoint Michael Chianowski to a three-year term on the planning commission and Michael Foley to a three-year term on the planning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken? Any discussion? Um, they have both uh been serving us for a couple of years, doing a good job. And they're in the middle of rewriting the town plan right now. And I've been in on uh several sessions and they're both doing their job, taking sections of it, taking it home, doing their homework. So I, I think this is a, it's appropriate to reappoint them. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Michael Chianowski and Michael Foley are appointed to the planning commission for a three-year term by a vote of 400. Uh, item nine uh is really by way of an announcement really. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, the vote, vote, the, the board voted to pursue USDA Community Connect Grants. Um, when I first looked at it and the way it was uh told to me, it was grants to allow towns to extend service lines to areas that are underserved. Um, what I was hoping to do with those was to uh get the grants, pay Comcast to extend those service lines. It turns out, one of the conditions of the grant is that whoever gets the grant has to own the lines. Which means we either have to have a utility company, uh, or we have to talk Comcast into applying for the grant. So it turns out, it's really not something that we can use right now. Um, so we will continue uh on the path that we were on, which was doing the internet survey, trying to establish uh where people still are not getting internet, are not getting good enough internet and um go from there, once we have that information. Item 10 is the treasurer's report. Melanie Dexter. You're used to being at the front of the meeting, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't even bring your knitting with you.
Next time. Okay, um, wanna look at the cash flow first? Ooh, it's tiny. Um, let's see, what's going on here? Another big chunk of delinquent taxes. Um, that's uh continues to have some pretty, pretty large quantities there. Uh, if you see a couple of lines under that, the, that's the uh money you've been spending on, on coal haul in the garage. That's just replenishing the um, the general fund where those checks are written from, that 159,000. Um, so that's just, that's mostly garage money, but also coal haul money in there. Um, let's see, anything else interesting here? Not really. You look down at the bottom, if you wanna look at the budget number of the actuals versus budget. I say this every time, we're spending a, a little bit faster than we were last year, but it's, it's hard to, that gap is starting to close. So, so it's, we're, we're right on target. It's.
The majority of that is when you, because we're at the three-quarter mark, where the reserves are paying full, the community appropriations are paying full. So when you start adjusting it, we're at 75%. Just because we pay all this at once.
Yeah, yeah. And it, and the, the differences are, are really tiny. And most of our revenue is in, there's just gonna be a little bit more, you know, clerk revenue and um, uh, transfer station, stuff like that. So, so we're starting to see the, the end picture and it's looking right on target. Uh, if you wanna look at the reserve um report, if you got it there. Uh, if you wanna look at the reserve, um, report, if you got it there. Yep. Let's see, if you wanna look down at, um, 280 Coal Hall there, you can see that we've pretty much spent, we, we spent a bunch of money, we got in the mud, what's that, the 27,000, that was a transfer in from?
That was a transfer in from the GW Hawkins.
Right, that's, okay, that's what I thought, so, so that's, and you can see we're, we're down to under a thousand dollars in Coal Hall, so that's, we're, we're sitting in the, the, the way all that money was used.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody agrees, it looks great.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just below that...
That's what it was there for.
Um, just below that is the, uh, the garage, uh, that's just, um, what is that, that's the last...
That's what's left.
Yeah, right, so you can see at the, at the end, that's the actual cash balance of, um, of what's, what's left to pay off the, the bond and stuff like that. Um, and then the other...
So, that, that, is that, that's all the, the money that's left, that we've gone through the bond?
Yeah, we're, we're totally done with the bond.
We're down to the, what's left in the garage reserve?
Yeah. Uh, if you look down at the 870, we talked about that last time, that we were wondering why there was a, a great big negative number, you can see that, uh, three from the bottom there, we were, we started out the month with negative 120,000 dollars.
Eight seven.
But that's the, the paving money came through, so, so that's what we, we had to spend it before the grant came through, but now we're, we're behind in that.
Okay, okay, great.
We knew that was gonna happen, it wasn't, it wasn't worrisome at all, but that's, you're seeing the results of that. Um, so that's that, anybody have any questions about anything?
Do you, do you see a number of what taxes are left to be paid, or, or that's all been turned over to Murr? So, you probably don't get that, do you?
I, I, he gives me reports.
Okay. I'm just curious, is it, is it about where it normally is?
It's, yeah, there's, there are curves for these things, and it, they hardly ever changes.
Different.
We, we all try to come up with, with systems to make it easier to pay and, and more efficient, and, but it really doesn't change.
And it doesn't matter whether the economy is good or bad, it doesn't seem to.
I looked at it one time, you might have asked me, and, and it, it's just remarkably stable.
Yeah, okay.
Like, you know, if, if there were a magic bullet, somebody would've thought of it before.
Okay, yep.
Anything else?
Any more questions for Melanie? All right, good, thank you.
Okay.
All right, DP Debbie report. Dave, are you gonna do that for us?
Yeah, Michael couldn't be with us this evening, so just go with some brief things we're doing. We have, as you're well known, we have a number of grants that need to be finished by June 30th. Uh, we're putting out a bid tomorrow, uh, for a number of projects that were approved through the Grant and Aid Program from the state, where we go around with members of the state and VCR see, segments of roads are picked, uh, to fit standards for the municipal road general permit. Uh, so the areas we have are Cider Mill, Cold Spring, Holy Smoke, Murphy Hill, West Mountain, and Horton Hill, different sections. Cider Mill is getting what are called stone mattresses to, to get the drainage underneath the road. Cold Spring is getting ditching, berm removal, mulching and seeding. Holy Smoke may have to be postponed because we have an environmental issue. Uh, Murphy Hill Road, uh, is gonna have 20 trees removed by the intersection with Sal Gannon, there's a spring at literally underneath the road in the intersection, so we're gonna be putting a mattress in there, stone line ditch to the west-east side of the road, and cut back a whole series of trees there. Uh, West Mountain has a section in the apple orchard, we're also putting stone mattresses underneath the road to carry the water from one part of the swamp to the other part of the swamp. And Horton Hill is gonna be excavated, ditches, stone line ditches put in, uh, remove the berm that's there, and it needs a couple of culvert pipes put through with a tomb. So, these will all go out to bid for contractors that can finish these before, uh, June 30th.
These are all grants?
These are all grants, yeah. The total cost of town for these is about, uh, off the top of my head, maybe $5,000, $10,000. We're getting about $60,000 on these grants. Uh, and then we're gonna look for, I think on Wednesday or Thursday, Michael will be with, uh, the engineers from the state on West Mountain Road and on, uh, Chesapeake Hollow Road, looking at the sections that we had problems with. We have money that, uh, through the Class B Road Fund, that we wanna use in those two sections to find, raise some of the problems that we had this year, actually, so, uh, the hill and Chesapeake Hollow did, I mean, it was bad, don't deny that, there were sections of West Mountain that were, you know, by your corner, that were horrific, and that's what they're gonna look at, and we might do some, uh, some testing to see what, what we can put in there. Uh, we'll also be out on White Creek Road, where we have that dip that keeps going in, and we are going to drill there and take samples and determine what we're gonna have to put underneath that. Uh, and that's based, because the hydrologists from the state wanna know what they're getting into, and we did the same thing when that happened over at Brenells, so that's held up pretty well for the last five years. Uh, and then, like I said, after we get the engineering reports back and suggestions for there, uh, we'll move forward with the contracts for those two sections, because the idea of what we wanna do is have our guys doing the maintenance that needs to be caught up on, and we'll hire contractors to do the construction projects. And Michael can oversee the contractors, and our guys can continue doing the work for regular maintenance.
What would differentiate between regular maintenance and a construction project?
Well, if we're talking about, uh, putting in these stone pillows, I mean, these are two to three day projects, depending on how many you're doing. Uh, also, like, when you look at the hill in Chesapeake Hollow, we're talking about digging the entire base out of the road, replacing the base, because right now, from this one, we found most of the top material was gone, down to fabric which was put in, we're not quite sure when, but underneath it was even worse. So, there's really no solution, except digging it out. And the other problem that you've seen in some areas in town, the road keeps creeping up, too.
Yeah.
And sometimes you have to take it out and, uh, get it going. So, you know, part of the problem is you start to bog down doing big construction projects, you only have six guys, and it's summer, and you have vacations and things, it, uh, it becomes difficult.
How much comp time is there this year?
Zero.
Zero?
Yeah, we don't use comp time because it's so difficult.
Okay.
Uh, it costs the same amount in, in off time, and if you let them build up too much comp time, you have to hire someone, replace them, or we can't function.
That's, that's what I asked, okay.
So, uh, but yeah, that's the main difference, is you look at some projects and it's just, I can pay, we have a list of seven local excavators and contractors, some have already done work for us in other areas, and we're gonna bring them these projects in the future ones and make a competitive bid, and this is what we'll send them out to do. Um, our new foreman, who's run projects for V Trans, at District One out of the garage, he managed up in Clarendon, can oversee all of this work, uh, that's what he went to college for, was a construction manager, oversee these things, so...
So, a culvert, putting a culvert under a road would be a construction project, not a maintenance project?
No, not necessarily, no, you know, it, it depends, if we're getting into a big stretch, like going up the hill in Chesapeake Hollow, it's easier just to hire someone to do the whole section. If we're going to, one thing, the only reason like the stone pillow on, on West Mountain, we might've done that ourselves, except it was part of this whole package of six things the state wanted us to do, so it's like a fine wire, someone to do everything, and then it's easier for them to move around. And for the contractor, that gives more of a project to bid on. You know, I'm, I'm, you know, if you're on culvert, you might not even wanna bid on that, it's just, or it'll get done when it gets done, you know? But on East Road, we had 10 culverts to replace for the paving last year, we wound up hiring a contractor because, you know, if, we're just putting in 10 culverts, day after day, it's, nothing else is getting done.
True.
You know? And it does, because there's so much ditching and things that need to be done, if we have two ditching crews out, or one guy grading, uh, another guy, another crew ditching, we're moving things along while these really troublesome sections are being repaired, so, you're just, for the short construction season, we're just getting a lot done, a lot more done. That's, that's the goal of it all. You know, I think, I think it should work out pretty well. I mean, I, we're not a construction company, and we shouldn't be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not when we have 70 miles, well, you know, if you think about it, it's 140 miles of ditches and everything else, you know, uh, each, two sides of trees that need to be cut, brush, you know, it's endless, so, and it takes a long time to do every section, so, but that's, that's the main goal of it.
Dave, you said you were gonna have engineers checking, uh, West Mountain Road?
Yes.
Are they gonna check, uh, the lower end of Blueberry Hill and that corner right there of Benet Hill?
Yeah, where it all, you know, where that huge eruption was on the corner there, and they'll look at the whole thing.
Yeah, 'cause that, that corner's been bad for a while.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is part of it, it's, again, and I appreciate what you said before, this is one of the things that I push, and I, I, Michael completely agrees with, is, it's, you gotta look at this differently, you have to go out and, let's fix the problem.
I mean, on top of Benet Hill, I mean, I know the town doesn't have a zoning code, but they really oughta, when stuff gets, being dug and stuff, they oughta start asking what...
That berm, I know exactly what you're talking about, and it's all...
You oughta start asking what people are gonna do with...
Is, is that on town property?
No, it's all on his property.
It's all on his property, but it collapsed your, your aquifer, because you, you loaded the, you loaded the ground with eight feet of fill, and that's a compaction method.
Yeah, and, you know...
You collapsed everything, and that road, right, just, right from that, right up, that whole road went.
Yeah, it's, uh, that's, yeah, kinda dicey. It's on his property, and I know why I was building it, and...
Oh, I...
Yeah, it's, uh, what do you do?
Um, what's your, what's your opinion on daily supply of quality gravel?
Well, it's, it's going, uh, back and forth, and we've had some issues with it, and we have, uh, one of the other things we're doing is to set up a, a trucking contract, because the stuff up in Wallingford is better, and...
Sure, back out SLC.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're looking at hauling material down, uh, especially when we move from here and we have some space, we can store a lot of stuff at the new area, and we can truck it down and move it from there to, to the different sites. Because it is, we've, no doubt, had issues with material.
And we got promises that it wouldn't happen again.
Yeah, yeah.
It does.
I think we should stack well, some, at the new...
Well, yeah, at the new area, where, below, where it's all cut out, and now that's cleaned up down there, you know, there's no salt, there's no environmental issue here, we're just gonna deliver stone there, and then we'll have our own supply, and even like this last mud winter was so bad, and we couldn't get material, it's like, what do you mean, you're running out of material? This is what we all do with mud season, we get material, and, uh, you know, that becomes a, a problem. Now, we'll have that stored up there, too, so we can get it when we need it, um, because we, we will have a lot, a lot of space out here, when you got the regular winter sand, it kinda takes up a lot, so there are a lot, a lot of things that we're looking at to try and alleviate some of these issues, and make it, uh, more responsive and get some of these problems solved.
Two graders at a time?
Always in the beginning, and then it just sort of roll out to the...
The window is so short, 'cause after, after about two weeks, two to three weeks, it got so hard that the grader really doesn't, you can't cut to the bottom with it.
Yeah, we wanna get them out, uh, and that's Michael's call, what they, they actually start going around to, to get the roads back in shape. And then, what we do wanna do is get David going around, uh, all the time in the grader, because we keep working on the spots, keep digging out the holes, and, uh, the attachment, we wanna get for the grader, so we're compacting as we're grading to make it firmer, and then with the new solution we're gonna use, uh, for chloride, uh, and really firm the roads up, 'cause, you know, as you know, when we grade now, it's kinda fluffy, for lack of a better word, and before, everything's done, a car drives out, and you have a nice deep tire tread right up the middle of the road, and it's just a channel, and, you know, we ran a New York break up with it, doesn't do anything, you know, it's just, uh...
It's attachment that goes on the back of the grader.
Yeah, it's just, uh...
Tires.
Yeah, are you wanting to talk about that tonight?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, we have the bid, this is designed for our grader, uh, from John Deere, and, uh, it puts down pressure on it, the whole mechanism, we already have the whole thing in the back there, so the insulation is rather minor, we have the hydraulics on the unit we have.
Goes up the scare fire.
Yeah, and, you know, just, you know, you can just, it's on there, and then you can just take it around, and it compacts the road as we're doing it, and it makes for much higher, harder base, it'll keep things in place so that maybe the crown holds longer, and if we're doing this, as we're going around, the road should automatically start getting in better shape all the time. I mean, not compacting the roads is not good, 'cause we do lose a lot of material off, on everything. I mean, we lose a lot of material that just rolls off the wayside. Uh, so this is something that, that we do want, want to get, it's been talked about for a while, but I think it's time to, to move on this. It's, uh, delivered, installed, $39,000, $39,550, which, which we have in the equipment fund.
We have that in the equipment fund?
Yeah.
And it's not gonna keep us from, um...
No, we have...
Buying something else that is already planned?
No, we, we, uh, the object was to replace the O9 possibly this year, but the O9, we're probably gonna roll off to a backup vehicle, we've already committed to buying North Bennington's truck for $35,000. Uh, what I'm looking at now, what I've been talking to Mike about, is, um, it's, it's basically a new 5500, it'd be Silverado or International's coming out with a new one, uh, it's based on, it's a GM engine and things, too, uh, that would be useful for down here, and we would have trucks for, uh, the other routes. But that's on the thinking stages. The frame for that alone is about $48,000, so we'd have about $50,000 for, uh, all the different parts that have to be added onto it, like the body and things, so, that's in the thinking stages. But the North Bennington thing we're committed to already, which is really a good truck that has no miles on it, and I think this is just an important step in getting our roads in better shape by compacting them as we're doing it. There's a lot of dam pressure on this, so it's not just tires rolling on it, it's, it's compacting, so, and like I said, it's, we already have the system on our grader to put it on. Sound like a good idea?
Um, town meeting, they, we, we, they voted to increase their budget by $40,000 for that's in, you were able to put that towards gravel and salt?
Uh, 40, the 40,000, the way it's voted off the floor, it's just an increase in the budget for 40,000, it can go to anything, but the intent was clearly, uh...
Gravel.
For gravel, uh, you know, our gravel budget started going up because gravel was the solution to everything, and I'm not so sure I agree gravel's the solution to everything.
Gravel, they can come get it from a front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's worth, it's worth all this.
Yeah, no, I, I know, so, I mean, we have options, but we can cover everything, I mean, we just, again, because we fixing the same problems over and over again, we just put down 1,200 tons of gravel during that three-day weekend, a couple weekends ago.
Gravel or stone?
Stone and, yeah, stone, sorry, I'm saying, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Stone doesn't...
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, you know, it's no small amount that went down, but if we fixed some of these spots, we wouldn't be spending this money every year, filling them back in, you know, so it's, let's spend some money to fix things.
But you say we've got, we've got in equipment reserve the money to buy this and the North Bennington truck?
Yeah, in the equipment reserve, uh, as of July 1st, we'll have $162,000. So, this is 39.5, North Bennington's 35, that'll leave us with, uh, $87,000 in the equipment reserve.
Yeah, I think, um, we would do well to keep the 40,000 that the, uh, the citizens added to the budget, uh, for gravel.
I agree.
Because, uh...
Yeah, I mean, the, the days of buying out of the pit in White Creek at $5 a yard, you can't do that anymore.
What's got you into this problem?
I know, I know that.
That's the whole West Side.
Yeah, we, we know that.
Material is still good, it's not a bargain.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, so what's coming down out of Wallingford or Daleys is about the same price delivered in here, which is about three times...
Yeah.
Five dollars a yard, that's the problem. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is, it's a lot of money, uh, but, you know, especially the, the stuff out of Wallingford now, I don't think they call it SLC anymore, I think it's hasn't done a name.
No, they just got...
It's called Wallingford Crushed Stone.
Wallingford Crushed Stone, yeah, uh, I mean, it's good quality stuff.
It's the best.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
So, yeah, it will be a little bit more expensive, and, and we'll bring that down.[1761.12] So, yeah, it will be a little bit more expensive, and we'll bring that down. You know, because we have, you know, our neighbors, we've asked, we've had some issues. And, uh, it's not...
The Monday, the Monday after that bad weekend, I went up to SLC to check out some of the material. And I bet there was forty trucks in there.
That's true.
Yeah.
They have a mountain of it up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, when do you wanna buy the roller?
Uh, I would say as soon as possible. So, if we have a motion, this isn't like something, you know...
How fast can they deliver it?
Uh, probably pretty quickly.
This is a new, uh, piece of equipment?
It's a brand new piece of equipment.
Okay, and there's, uh... Is there any point in shopping around for this? Because it is, uh, over...
It is over, we could put it out to bid.
Put out to bid?
Uh, we could put it out to bid and probably get responses pretty quick, because the response would probably be from Springfield, because, uh, there's territories to this. There's company Walk and Roll out of Iowa, or North Dakota, I think it is, uh, pretty much. They don't, people will build this thing, so, we'd probably get some substandard secondary ones, because there are some other ones around, but this is a quality piece of equipment. We can, we can do a quick bid out on it and just see what we get back, and do it that way. Or we could sole source it to, uh, the D O D that we use. We'll probably only delay it two weeks.
You're not gonna do what's great in two weeks anyway?
Right.
You're not gonna dry out there?
But you say there are, um...
Oh, there's other products out there. Yeah, there are other products out there.
Okay, um, if we have the time, uh, procedure is that we put something over ten thousand dollars out to bid?
I disagree, I don't think you have the time. I think you'll be surprised how fast it'll, supposed to be windy tomorrow, not supposed to rain till Friday. Things will dry out pretty fast, and they've got, we've gotta get out there. But I don't know, is, I don't know, is you wanna start packing with the frost still in the ground? That's a, that's a problem too. We still got frost, we gotta, we gotta start leveling it out and getting the...
It won't, it won't blow the muds anywhere. You get the west side to go first, then the east side.
Okay.
If the shady areas are gonna be the last...
If you can do it within two weeks, and, and if we do decide by our next meeting, can you guarantee that we'll have things?
I can spec it out by the end of tomorrow, have a quick add in by Friday. Everything due back by, when's the next meeting? The fifteenth, by five P M, bids here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this D O R will just make up another one and send it to me.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, I'll give, I mean, we'll send it to the equipment man, people around here.
Okay, if you can have it in two weeks, we'll go with it. As long as he can deliver, if we decide on this one, it can be delivered immediately, okay?
Well, we'd have to check on the immediate, but, uh, he would have it as, as quick as he could, I'm sure. Because I know it is a bit high of forty thousand, so it's a bit high.
When you put your proposal out, ask if it was decided on how long of delivery time?
Yeah.
Yes, we don't always have to...
Because some might be way out, and some of the smaller people who make these things, yeah, they'll give us, you know, ten thousand off, and we'll get it in October, you know? And, and we, we need it, we need it now.
How about this, how about we, um, without objection, we, uh, agree to let David put this out to bid? Dave, you call around and see, um, who might bid and what their, uh, delivery dates are. If, uh, Dave decides that, you know, there's only one guy that's gonna deliver it inside of two months, uh, we can have a, uh, an emergency meeting to, or a special meeting to authorize the purchase?
Yeah.
On a, on a sole source?
Yes.
Yeah, because I can call people and get that answer pretty quickly.
Okay.
Or Michael, he knows more people in this business than I do.
Yes, there's a thought, Dave. Uh, probably not reasonable, because you have to involve two men. But you might wanna check in a, a small five-ton vibrator roller, separate machine.
Yeah, there's, uh, the, the beauty of this thing is, it's, it's right with the guy.
No, I understand that, I'm just thinking that if you could find a small vibrator, you could use it for more than just for other jobs too.
Well, I saw about another thing, uh, for our, our grader. It will pull back the berms in the side of the ditch and has like a, a tiller. And tells it down, it's actually a pretty interesting tool. Yeah, we can look into that too.
It gets the berm off the edge of the road?
Oh, it takes everything off the edge of the road. It's really quite an interesting thing, I just started looking at it, so, it's, uh...
Sometimes you don't wanna bring it in though, sometimes you wanna push it off.
Well, no, no, that's, that's, part of it was showing like it was, seemed to be bringing a lot of vegetation up. I'm like, why isn't it pushing it the other way? You know, just push it further down, but we'll look into it a little bit more. But I think, uh, that would be it for roads for this evening.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, item twelve is personnel policy amendment on cellphone usage. Have you got for us there, Dave?
Yep, this is just changing or adding Appendix D. I removed the original Appendix D that was in here, because it's covered in the renewed, uh, personnel policy. Uh, Appendix D now would just be, uh, cellphone regulations and what can be done with your cellphone while you're at work. Uh, we wanna make it crystal clear that the use of a cellphone in many instances will lead to, uh, discipline action immediately. Uh, while you're operating a piece of heavy equipment, while you're driving. Uh, the other thing coming up is videotape, not videotape, whatever you call it, using the camera when, you know, in, in the wrong circumstances. People, uh, it would prohibit any kind of camera usage without the permission of people who are being filmed, your coworkers and that, we don't want it in certain areas. It's just a, a way of allowing us to strongly address any issues that go on with a cellphone. Uh, it gets to be, it's a hazard, you know, and when you're, you know, when you're sitting behind a piece of heavy equipment and someone's depending on you paying attention to those controls, uh, you shouldn't be looking at Facebook or something, you know? It's just, it has to be, you got the phone out, that's it, you're not supposed to have it in your hand, and we have to be able to take quick action on it. And it's not really covered. I mean, we know we just did the personnel policy, but it just wasn't something that was there. It's been brought to my attention a couple of instances, and it just needs to be, you know...
Shouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, that's basically what it does, you know?
Our company policy, I mean, you, workers aren't allowed to have phones on the jobs.
Yeah, yeah.
Plain and simple.
It's dangerous.
Well, I, I think they should have their phone because of calling you an emergency or...
Well, yeah, and that's, that, there is a, in here, you can use your phone clearly for an emergency, but you can't, you can't be using it for, you know, internet or whatever while you're working. No, you're supposed to have it here if you're on your break and you wanna do something, uh, that's one thing. But when you're working, the phone's away, you're working, it never should be seen in the cab of a piece of heavy equipment.
A CDL driver is governed by federal regulations that are very, there's a huge fine for operating a phone.
Yeah.
Even, you can't, you have to pull off the travel portion of the road to use a phone, according, if you're a CDL driver. And we, we got CDL drivers, so...
Yeah, we have CDL drivers.
They're covered by federal law.
Yeah, and we need to, uh, just make sure we have a way of addressing this rapidly.
Oh, yes, huge fine.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, and, and it makes clear in here too that any, anything that summonses or anything that anyone accrues while they're operating our equipment is their problem, not ours.
But part of the federal regulations is that it has to be spelled out to them, because Coca-Cola was fined, did not specify to their employees that this was the rule.
Oh, okay.
And so Coca-Cola paid a huge fine.
Well, that's a...
So, it, we have to do this to make the, the federal thing.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, because say, if, if the board approves this, I am gonna sit down with, with everybody, and we're gonna have a thorough review of all our rules and regulations, because
We have to have that.
We need things to be, need ways to address things that need to get done.
Yep, we have to have that.
Okay, I have not seen that text. Did that get circulated?
Yeah, it's been in the Dropbox.
Have you guys seen the text? No, I don't think we've seen the text.
Is it in the Dropbox? I, I don't know, I've, this is the second time.
Dropbox does not have anything for, um, March or April, I don't believe.
Do you wanna look at it first?
I thought it was there.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, have a chance to read it. Do you need this tonight?
Uh, no, we can, we can wait till on next meeting.
You sure?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would like it done as, as quick as possible, because we postponed it from the last one, uh...
Can I make a motion that unless Tim finds out something that he thinks is...
Yeah, my only, I agree with everything you say, I just wanna make sure that there's nothing in here that keeps employees from using the phone for things that could be useful, like if they see a road condition, they take a picture of it, send it to the foreman and say, do I do, you know, what do I do with this big a hole, kinda thing?
I think that is more for personal use, Tim, and it's to report something from work relatedness.
Use of the camera or video or audio recording capability, capable devices on town property or work zones on town property is prohibited without the express prior permission of the town administrator and select board and with the persons subject to recording. See, that to me says somebody might be afraid to take a picture of a road condition and send it to, to the foreman. Does that, does, does town park one include the roads?
Yes.
It does, okay.
And the, you know, I see the problem of, here, I'm gonna stop and take a picture, I'm gonna send the picture to somebody else who's driving, uh, whereas you could get on your radio and say, hey, I don't understand this, come over and look at it.
Okay.
A picture isn't gonna tell you the depth of the hole or anything.
Yeah, I, I'd really like some time to look this over, and, uh...
And please check your Dropbox, it's all via, because all this is there.
Yeah.
Uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen meetings, I don't have anything past February in the Dropbox.
Yeah, because it's in, it was in March third, and it's in April first, or whatever today's date is, yeah, April first. Well, anyway, okay, we'll look through it, and then we'll, we'll pick it up by the next meeting, I guess.
Yeah, and let's, did you guys find it?
I don't know.
I, I, I'm not sure you're...
It's in my Dropbox, I don't, I don't know how it didn't get in the Dropbox. Ken Smart, he doesn't have a Dropbox, he makes me freak everything out, so...
I think that you work, you didn't wear it, so I sent that one.
Maybe it is.
Yeah, like I say, in the twenty-nineteen meetings and
No, okay.
In the Dropbox, I don't have any entries past, uh, February eighteen.
I can't find that.
Okay, yeah, let's figure out where that is, but yeah, I would like to, to read this through.
Okay.
Okay, uh, yeah, sorry about that.
Well, then I guess you don't have anything else, you know, either.
Dave, before you forget, is that Hollow Hideaway Culver down there this year?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Hollow Hideaway Culver.
What?
Hollow Hideaway.
Oh, oh, Hollow Hideaway Culver, sorry, that, uh, yeah, that's, uh, what we're doing now is, uh, we've gone back, we're getting repricing from the Culver manufacturer, because remember, we got this first part of this grant, what, three years ago now? And those are the original prices. So, we have, uh, our original engineer is reworking the cost estimates for us, because to go out to bid and do the bid documents, we have to have some more up-to-date figures on things. But we expect to write that out and put it out to bid this winter, because the grant expires in December of twenty. So, uh, we'll bid it this winter and they'll do it next summer. Uh, provided, of course, we have enough money, because the way things are going up, we might have to come up with some more money in the twenty-twenty-one budget, so that we have enough money to do it. Uh, we have to say, but we are working on that. Chris Penessi, who was the original engineer on it, he stopped in, we went over the numbers, and, uh, he contacted Contex, I believe it is, who specked the whole thing out for us originally. But we need some updated numbers to move forward.
Yeah, but it's still a lot less than the original.
Uh, well, it was the, one of the five, four options we got.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah.
But I mean, it's been increasing, uh, we had a hundred and thirty thousand dollar option one time, and now we're up to, what, two fifty?
Yeah, it's gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, the original was a half a million, but
Yeah, true.
We came up with plans B and C, but, uh, those have increased in cost a lot.
It's just, it's taken so many years, I mean, Contact, Contact has been waiting for two years for us to get back to them from the original thing, and just took, uh, I think we were turned down three times for this grant. So, we finally got it, and, uh, we're just upgrading the numbers now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the, the good point right there, is that, you know, we have to time these things when we can get a grant to do something that costs a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, so, the timing will work out right, as soon as we find out how much money we need for. That's it for that.
Okay, uh, do you have something in coal hall or garage?
Coal hall is just simply, uh, we have a, a proposal for manual, uh, where the balcony was up there, uh, up above this structure we built, we have to seal the opening up with, with sheet rock, fire-rated sheet rock, and an opening to what's above here. That way, we can use that again for light storage, it's a fire code requirement. And that fits for eighteen hundred dollars, and, uh, I'd like to go ahead with that after the beginning of the next fiscal year, and just have that sealed up so we can put light storage up there. Otherwise, we violate the C O for the building.
Um, yeah, without objection, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and the last item, which I guess no one's seen either, uh, is Correctional Industries' proposal for furniture, which, uh, came to four thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that would be for two, uh, forty-eight by seventy-two slab-end conference tables, which would go here.
We did see this.
Oh, you did get those, oh, good, okay.
I came through.
Uh, I have two of these desks here, and that's it, that's what we'll get. And that desk over there would be Joan's desk, because she has a folding table. Uh, I would get one of these desks, because I have two folding tables. And Melanie has some desk that we found somewhere, uh, just to upgrade these. As, as far as the price of furniture goes, these are far, by far, the best price, and it's quality furniture made.
Melanie doesn't want one of these desks?
Who?
Melanie doesn't want one of these desks?
Melanie's getting one of these desks.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's massive.
And Joan would...
And then you said, uh, two of these would be the...
Two of those would go across here, and they're about this wide.
They're four by six, yeah.
Yeah, so two will run down this way.
Right, and I was just somewhere where I was sitting in a room with two four-by-six conference tables that looked exactly like they were built with the same kinda construction we saw over there at the school. Trying to remember where that was.
Usually, every state building has furniture from Corrections Industries.
Yeah.
And most, many schools do too. And I'm pretty sure the tables over there are from, because they look like just like pictures, you know, so... Um, like I said, for, for this amount, it's, uh...
Feel attached to it, yeah.
Two secretarial desks, lock and drawers, all that stuff, slab-end conference tables, two of those. Uh, installation, delivery and installation, uh, four thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars.
Good price, good price.
And that could come out of D W Alkins Fund, uh, and this furniture will be here for twenty years, so it's basically...
I'm more than that.
Yeah, yeah, given, given the longevity of our last furniture, much, much longer.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize David to buy, um, these aforementioned pieces of furniture for a total of four thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents?
So, so...
Moved by Art?
Certainly.
Certainly by Ken? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the motion carries by.
So, we will order those up, and it takes about four to six weeks for delivery from there.
Okay, very good.
Uh, let's see, the, uh, garage, let's see, what's going on with the garage? Uh, we have ours, ours...
Before you go to the, yeah, before you go to garage, I wanted to make mention of, um, as we're, and this is just in the thinking stages, um, but we're talking about redoing the outside of Coal Hall, and Shelley Stiles, our zoning administrator, brought to our attention that, um, there's a grant program to put electric vehicle charging stations in place. And it's a very generous grant, um, it's, it only requires like a ten percent match. And, uh, some other, um, town halls have considered doing that sort of thing. Um, it's something we could think about incorporating into those plans. Uh, it's one of those things that kind of, uh, I kinda see as advertising, uh, that, you know, puts Shasbury on the map in terms of having a place where you can charge an electric vehicle. Maybe people will, you know, pull off the highway, charge a vehicle, stop at the chocolate bar, and that kinda thing. Uh, but, uh, we're still looking into it, how it would work, uh, what the total cost is. But the, the cost of one they put in Bennington was seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, so their match was seventeen hundred dollars. Um, I think, um, unless the, the board has, uh, strong objections against it, I think it's in, worth taking into our, uh, consideration and mentioning it to the architects, that that's something that, uh, could be incorporated into the parking lot that we're planning.
But do you need a different charger for each? But do you need a different charger for each, uh, vehicle? Not, not each type of vehicle or each brand?
Tesla requires a different type.
Right, like Tesla.
They give them the adapter for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it won't do on these, and then a rapid charger, which we wouldn't get, uh, is a different type of machine too.
Bet you have an iPhone, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're not standardized yet, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gonna put them on a radiator?
Actually, you can.
Yeah.
Uh.
Because they are, they do take a lot of electricity, I.
Yeah, well, we would not be buying people's, uh, electricity, any more than we'd be buying their gas.
Some places are free and.
Yeah, because it's like a two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollar, uh, annual fee, because you have to upload this information, which is, the beginning part of this is, gets a little complicated the way this works. So, because the state wants a monitoring of how many people are using the facility and everything, so it has to be uplinked to a company that will charge us two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty dollars a year to provide this service, which raises my question of, well, who's paying for that?
Right, yeah.
So, we can have like a card reader on it, so you would swipe your card, but we're only allowed to charge, uh, I think it's one dollar an hour or something for being hooked up to the machine, and we can't charge for the first year, because this grant goes on for pages and pages and pages.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then, there's a, I mean, applying for it's great, there's a lot of things, it's very limited, there's only four hundred thousand for the state out of this, and there's a whole list of priorities in the ranking scale, so, I mean, it's an interesting thing to look at, but, uh.
I think it's a great angle.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, Ken, but I just, yeah, again, it's, it's like that solar panels, just so many gimmicks.
Yeah, well, it's certainly not something we're ready to sign off on at this point, but, uh, I think it's.
I think it's a great.
Shelley will have a full thing ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, and one of the questions I did put, immediately put to Shelley was, what are the maintenance costs on this type of thing? So, yeah, we're not.
And we're responsible for it.
Sure.
Sure.
Once it goes in. In fact, we have to agree to keep it to a certain maintenance level and be able to repair parts as they, uh, fall, keep it always accessible. It has to be in a well-lit area, which would have, have to decide whether this qualifies, or do we have to bring it on this side of the building, they actually want it close to the building, so, I mean, it gets into a whole bunch of interesting, that's why you have to read.
That is the designated parking spot.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's two, and it's two, and designated, they have to be signed, uh,
Yeah, oh, yeah.
According to METCD, uh, and then when you put in the, the two, uh, I mean, it will take up this whole section here if it has to be close to the building, because it has a light restriction, it has to be close enough to lights, uh, accessible twenty-four seven. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a whole, it's a whole list.
Well, you'd cut out the advertising location too, wouldn't you?
Sorry?
You'd have to advertise the location.
Yeah, well, that's half the point is, and, and, you know, you get an extra point if you're within a mile of seven or four or two.
Yeah.
Uh, you get points for this, you get points for that.
Because I mean, the ones in Bennington are not mainstream.
Uh, if anything, gets all the points for being downtown.
I think that the way it works nowadays, people have a phone app that tells them where they are, so they, uh, that's how it gets advertised. Yeah, but, okay, well, it's just, you know, something, uh, to kinda keep in mind, doesn't even say if we, uh, haven't drawn into the plans that we have to do it, but, yeah.
Okay.
You've got some interesting points there about, uh, all the hoops they want us to jump in.
Yeah, it's interesting, it's, it's worth doing, I mean, if they give us the grant, we put it up, fine, if it doesn't cost a fortune over time to, to keep it up and running.
Right.
Uh, and how you can start charging back, because, you know, the average person can't go to mobile and fill up for free, so if you can go here, I mean, at some point, this costs the town money, so we have to be able to recoup the cost for maintaining this thing, you know? And I don't even know what those costs would be, I don't know if there's much data on how much these things cost, they're all subsidized now, and, uh, at some point, that disappears.
Yeah.
So, a lot of questions on.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll continue to look at it. Okay, sorry, you were gonna give us a garage.
Yeah, what's going on in the garage? We have this certificate of occupancy for the garage, uh, the garages come in, uh, within, right now, I'd say within ten thousand dollars of budget, below budget. Uh, if I, you know, the poet went in last week, the metal issue we had, uh, we're working on the CO2 detection system, because I think I found a flaw in it last week by accident, and so we're relooking at that. And basically, we just ended up finishing up, we was finishing up the site work, which is the biggest holdup to it, and that should be done in another two weeks, and we'll start to occupy it, uh, in the beginning of May, unless, uh, the site work falls behind, because we're not gonna operate there while the site work is going on. And then we can finish the driveway into the transfer station and, and get the final coat on it, which, uh, Michael will do the site work for that and, and the grades, we are just gonna pay and have material trucked in, rent a bulldozer, and we will lay it out and compact it ourselves and get that done. And, uh, we only, the, the project is, the hundred and sixty-four that was on there before, uh, a hundred and twenty more of that is owed to Russell, we're just waiting for the final bill. I cleared most of the, uh, we canage on the last bill, uh, but we're holding everything down until the final, final thing, there's so few things going on up there now. Like I said, it's basically all being held up by the site work that had to stop back in November, and then we're ready to go. The well is up and functioning with the poet, it will be tested this week by KAS, because again, this is a state test well, part of our whole remediation system up there, so in theory, the water's not being used for another two weeks until we get back the results from KAS, they get certified by the state, and then we'll be ready to go. But yeah, it's, uh, just about done, we're gonna look into a sign, a combined sign for the transfer station and the garage, uh, and some signs for the transfer station, uh, because that's just one of those little details that keeps kinda getting bumped down the list a little bit, but.
Yeah, a lot of people have asked me about
Yes.
Signs to tell them where to throw stuff.
That's something I'm taking up with, with, with TAM also, because we, we pay a large management contract for them, and they have an employee there who's supposed to be providing all this information and doing all this stuff. Remember, our function here is solely to sell tickets, so their employee has to be doing something. You know, that's a big chunk of our management contract, is their employee to be telling people what to do.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you know, I think, I think that's part of the problem.
Okay.
Yeah. All I have for the garage, really, it's almost done and it's, uh, you know, just a little bit below what we budgeted, so, uh, and I really don't see anything left after the poet, and I don't see anything really left of interest going in there, so.
Open house or something?
Yeah, it's, it's all settled, we actually have to get it going, because we have a state meeting there, uh, April twenty-first, I think, you know, regional, uh, foreman's meeting with, uh, people coming down from Pili to talk about something, I forget. Coming to talk about something, uh, so, uh, we'll, we'll be up and running.
Yeah. Good. Well, once again, thank you for, uh, keeping such a good, uh, close eye on that and managing that construction project along with this one, this one at the same time.
Yeah, and they're both, they're both almost done.
Yes. Very good. All right, uh, where is it? Uh, I've got a, uh, uh, the last item here is a cooperative agreement with the US Forest Service for fire equipment, the, uh, we have a, uh, what they keep describing as a slip-on unit that goes on one of the trucks, it's a pump and a tank for fighting brush fires, it's loaned to us from the US Forest Service, and every couple of years, we get a, uh, a request, uh, asking, uh, if we still have it, if we're still using it, and if so, to, um, uh, sign to that effect. I have checked with, uh, with Joe and Jerry, and they say, yes, we're still using it, so, I'm gonna ask that, uh, for a motion to, uh, sign the cooperative agreement for the use of federal excess property in the cooperative federal excise property program, which in this case is a slip-on unit, unit for the fire department.
So moved.
Moved by Ken?
Second.
Seconded by Tony, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, that motion carries by a vote of four zero zero, and they want us all to sign it. And does that get signed, Dave, is there any other business?
Nope, it's, uh.
Does the board have any other business?
Yeah, I, I've got something on, just to talk, talk about.
Take your time.
I know we don't have any call with the state, but Route seven A is dangerous from iron kettle up through shoulders falling off, the tractor trailer going up through there sucks you right over the side. And now that Daley is back hauling all the cracks and, and the middle of town here are, are thumping away, I don't know what, just, I think we just have to say that it's dangerous.
Yeah.
So, coming down from, uh, Robert Frost's house, that shoulder is falling away now.
Yeah.
Sucks you right over there, I don't know how those guys do it, day after day, hauling the stone out of quarry.
It's badly grooved.
Yes.
Badly grooved.
Can you just send a terse letter to them, or what?
What I would, what I would suggest, because we, we've been this way before, and what, as I remember, the last thing they told us is, they have their whole, you know, planning grid and, you know, we're way down here, and, uh, I would suggest the board send a letter to the representatives and senators and say, you know, this is
So weird.
This, this is a whole issue, you know, it's, uh, because they're just gonna tell us, you know, we have the grid and we figured out this, that, and, you know, I could, been on other roads, Route thirty, Route eleven, uh, up through the mountains are, are really horrible too. I don't know how they come up with prioritization, but, uh, this is a main trucking route, especially up through, through here.
I've, I've never, from iron kettle up through, I've never seen it that bad, it's actually coming apart there.
Yeah, and I actually, you know, coming down it every day, I know, you can go over here a little bit, move this one, move that one, it's, uh.
It's the only paved road from one end to the town to the other, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both the south.
Yeah, and it's, uh, but yeah, the, the grooves, I've noticed they're just getting deeper and deeper.
I did hear a, uh, an article on, um, Vermont Edition about a week ago, where they were talking about, uh, the paved roads have suffered this year particularly severely, just like our gravel roads have, for the same reason, it's the repeated freezing and thawing that we're seeing through the winter instead of just having one month season.
I understand that, but I think either, either have the board sign it or whatever, I just think we gotta keep at it, you just can't.
Yeah, yeah, how about if, um, you and I get together and, and draft something and then we'll, uh, uh, we'll communicate by email, if it's, uh, agreeable to the board, we'll send it off. Any other business? All right, uh, reviewing action items, um, going back a ways, we're still carrying the, the business about the water fountains, I presume that's, uh, still being handled by the
Yeah, it's still moving along.
The Red Committee, the.
Water is, uh, we are getting the water turned back on, the rest station set up up there, uh, it, I mean, it's gonna be a few weeks, the place is as soaked as the rest of the town, uh, but, uh, we'll have the water up, fountain, as soon as, we're talking to a plumber now about installing it, and so we'll get that up, and then, uh, the playground's off a little bit, because the trucking cost is a fortune, the piece supplies we were looking at, so, but then, it's all in, in progress from that grant that we got from the state for that, so, that's continuing.
Yeah, good. And then, um, we're, um, still kind of putting off the, the business about, uh, consolidating some of the funds, we have a health fund that's, uh, got thirty thousand dollars in it that, uh, we wanna move to the general revenue fund, uh, I'm just kinda carrying that along to remind us that the next time we have an election, we should probably put that to the voters.
I was hoping to talk to Rob and have a sit-down with Rob and the Board of Trustees about this and some of the cemetery things that we need to move along to.
Yeah, and also the cemetery funds, we have, um, quite a bit of money in cemetery funds, uh, I think most of them need to, uh, stay where they are, but I think there's a couple, uh, well, one, the Grandview money, we need to, uh, dig through the documents and find out what
Yeah.
What for sure, uh, is that dedicated, or can it go into the general cemetery fund? And then we have, uh, we have a cemetery trust fund and a cemetery fund that, uh.
Yeah, the one was to buy land, which we're never doing again.
Yeah, one was, it, it's a, it's a long-term care fund, but it just says buy land, and it would probably be well if we could just combine those into general cemetery maintenance and, and upkeep. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we needed to announce the open house, that we did, uh, I was gonna pursue the USDA internet grant, I talked about that not being available to us, and Dave came forward with the estimate on the furniture, which we did, uh, authorize him to purchase today. Um, tonight, uh, we, we told Dave to go, uh, call around for, uh, compaction roller sellers and, uh, see if we've got bids available and what their possible delivery dates would be. Then we'll communicate, uh, uh, on that, uh, at the next meeting. We're going to get from the, the solar guy, we heard from his contract and, uh, talk about that. Dave, we authorized to go ahead and let Eddie build the firewall in the balcony up there so we can use that for light storage, and then Art and I will work on a letter to our, uh, state reps about the conditions on seven A. Anything else?
Thanks for putting this together. Thank whoever, thank you. Nice job.
Oh, yeah, the, uh, the open house was a success, and, yeah, we should mention that Dave and Marlene worked on pulling all that together, and that, uh, Dini Myers, our Lister, uh, did the baking.
Yes, the baker.
Yeah.
Delicious.